Welcome to the April 25th, Revere City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Roleful of the members, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Fiori is absent, Counselor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo. Here, Counselor Serino is absent, Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Fiscanti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of April 11th?
So move.
Mr. President? Yes, Counselor?
I'd like to request just a one-minute point of personal privilege.
Absolutely, if no objections. Okay.
Just real quick, I had received a text message from Counselor Fiori, who asked me to pass this along to members of the council, who may have not already heard from him, along with his constituents that have been trying to get in touch with him. Counselor Fiori has not been feeling well, but, you know, he is on the mend and he will be back, but he just wanted us to know and wanted his constituents to know that have been trying to get in touch with him. He just has not been feeling that well. He apologizes. He will be getting back to them. You know, he is getting better and should be back at some point sooner than later, so I just wanted to pass that along. And obviously, our best wish is for him to feel better soon.
Thank you, absolutely, and we all hope that he gets well soon. So, thank you for that information. I'd like to, okay, moving forward, we have, if I can request a suspension of rules and take up calendar items 22 and 23. If that's okay with everyone?
Yes.
Great.
Calendar item number 22, Communication from the Mayor Relative to a Briefing from the City Planner on the Multifamily Zoning Requirements for MBTA Communities.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the privilege to come on early. The Commonwealth has required...
Frank, can I have the name and address first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Frank Strinick, City Planner, City of Revere. The Commonwealth has required that all MBTA communities, city councils be briefed on the new adoption of Section 3A, which is the State zoning act. A portion of the State zoning act now it applies to MBTA communities. Now, the purpose of Section 3A is to encourage MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts that allow multifamily housing as of right. There are certain requirements for these districts. Number one, they have to be within a half-mile radius of a T station, commuter station, or bus station. They have to provide the density of at least 15 units per acre, and a district has to comprise at least 50 acres. So, Revere already complies with this new statute. We have many districts adjacent to our MBTA T-stations that allow multifamily housing as of right. Revere actually is well ahead of the curve. We've created transitory development districts more than decades ago in our community around Wonderland, and now we have around Beachmont and Revere Beach Station. So, these guidelines are basically effective in the City of Revere already. So, we don't have to take any action. And we have Suffolk Towns Overlay District, which is well over 50 acres adjacent to the Beachmont Tstation, which complies with this requirement. And that basically is, in a nutshell, and unless there are any questions in the City Council, that concludes my briefing.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're going to place this on file? Thank you.
Calendar item number 23, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to the Certification of Free Cash, June 30th, 2021.
I mean, Mr. Visquey? Is he? Huh?
(inaudible)
Okay, can we, we can hold that until he gets back? Thank you, back to the order of regular business, thank you.
Calendar item number three, Hearing called as ordered on the application of Carbell LLC, 355 Middlesex Ave., Wilmington, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to raise the existing non-conforming structures on 25 and 55 American Legion Highway and construct a new fast-food takeout-drive-in restaurant with a drive-through at 25 American Legion Highway and a new 6,786-square-foot structure consisting of a pizza shop and an urgent care center at 55 American Legion Highway.
We're going to start this public hearing with proponents. Name and address for the record, please.
Paul Neeland.
Put that, push that button.
Okay, Paul Neeland, I'm the manager of Belboa LLC and Carbell LLC, 25 and 55 American Legion Highway. We've got a digital presentation we'd like to present to give you an overview of the proposed redevelopment. For the record, I was here about 15 years ago. Many of the, I see some familiar faces from here because this entity is a related entity, redeveloped 3 through 9 Everett Street, which is the adjacent property across Everett Street. So, let's start with the first slide, which is a description, overview of the existing condition.
(inaudible)
Can we?
Yeah, just gonna, you just have to switch it back.
Okay. While that's, well, that one's an aerial photo, but let's just go to the first image. So, the existing condition is the Bank of America branch, which is recently closed. It's been there for several years. I think it was originally a Shawmit Bank and before that a hamburger stand. And then, adjacent property is a multi-tenant property, which currently has a pizza shop in it, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, a church, it's been various other uses, including a gym. So, even though these properties are in different entities, they're both controlled by myself. So, the intention is to raise both structures and produce a new retail development. Before I go on, I want to mention that I've got some people with me today. Catherine Hannigan and I work together at Channel Building Company, and I've got Ben Osgood here, who is a civil engineer, and Dave Sanderson here is from Convenient MD, is one of the tenants outlined to occupy the largest portion of this redevelopment. All right, back to the redevelopment. So, you can see on the nose of the property, closest to the rotary, is a new structure, and that's a Starbucks coffee shop. We've entered into a letter of intent with Starbucks. We've got a lease that we're negotiating, and that's a freestanding, single-tenant building, and it's intended to take some of the pressure off the store that's just south of the subject property. On the right side of the screen, you'll see two structures that share a party wall, the larger of which is Convenient MD, which is an urgent care center. And the other one is the pizza shop, which is a relocation of the existing tenant, Pizza Days. So, the intention is to raise both buildings, build these structures in a phased approach because we've got tenants moving in and moving out, and there's certain logistical challenges that we have. Realign the property line so that it's sort of more commensurate with a parking field, and make some changes to the curb cuts. As you probably know, because most everybody knows this property, there's a cut-through from Everett Street onto American Legion Highway that's commonly used, and that will be eliminated as part of this redevelopment. You probably also know that there's a retaining wall that separates the two properties. That's going to be removed. Properties, for all intents and purposes, is going to be on one plane, geometric plane. So, it's a pretty straightforward, small retail development, which is really sort of an expansion when I did it across the street. We are hoping to get underway this soon, maybe within the next few months if we can get the cooperation of the city. What's the next slide? Let me see if you've got some images of the actual structures. Okay, so this is a sort of a bird's-eye view. This is looking at it from American Legion Highway with my back to the north, looking south. Not a particularly good image, but you can see the Convenient MD has a hip roof, and the Starbucks has got a flat roof. Next slide, please. This is an image sort of hovering over American Legion Highway, looking to the north. You can see on this image, the pizza shop on the top of the screen on the right, it's kind of a separate structure attached to the Convenient MD. Convenient MD has their own requirements architecturally. Their branding is part of that red hip roof and the awnings, and so does in Starbucks, that matter. Is there another slide? There's a view looking from Everett Street, from the shopping center across the street. So, that's the Pizza Days to the east, and another view of Starbucks. I think that's about a wrap. So, we're before you because we need your cooperation and approval to rebuild a non-conforming use on both sites. So, I'm going to turn the mic over to Ben Osgood, who did the civil engineering. He can talk to the specifics about parking and traffic and the other engineering questions or statements that need to be made.
Okay.
Good evening, Ben Osgood, Ranger Engineering Group, civil engineer. So, I think it's good to just list the exact requirements, the exact reasons we're here. So, we're here under Section 17.40.03 for reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. And also, and this is in regards to the Starbucks site, which is 25 American Legion Highway, and 17.16.190, which is a special permit in the TED district for the drive-through. For 55 American Legion Highway, it's again, it's 17.40.03, construction of a non-conforming structure, replacement of a non-conforming structure, which can only be done by special permit from the city council. So, as far as traffic is concerned, we've actually applied to Mass Highway for driveway permits. We had previously applied, about five years ago, they approved our driveways. They look pretty much the same right now as they did before. Currently, there are two driveways on Everett Street. As Paul said, one of them is being eliminated. One of them is moving, being moved further from the traffic circle. Right now, there are actually three curb cuts on American Legion Highway. We're going to narrow that down to two. They're going to be made more conventional, conforming to Mass Highway specifications. And again, the first curb cut is further from the traffic circle. Mass Highway has, you know, things that they want done. They've come back with some minor modifications that they need, some traffic information that they'd like to see, and we're working through that process. So, we have done a traffic analysis, and basically, we took a look at what is on the site now versus what we propose to build. They've, using the trip generation manuals that the traffic engineers use, Bayside Engineering did the analysis. The site, as a whole, will have 75 or vehicle trips less during the 24-hour period than there is now. So, post-development will have actually less traffic than there is now, based on the uses that are there now or were recently there, the bank, the gym, the church, the rental car. So, overall, on a daily basis, it's fewer trips. On a peak hour basis, which is what everybody looks at, the AM and the peak hour, and the PM peak hours, in the PM peak hour, the number of trips goes down. In the AM peak hour, the number of trips goes up by about 75 vehicle trips, and that's 30-something in, 30-something out within that hour. So, 30 people visit Starbucks. It's, you may wonder how a Starbucks can have fewer, you know, less traffic than, say, a Bank of America. The thing about a bank and the uses that are there, people, their destinations. So, the trip manual will say, okay, we're going to have X-number of people come to this destination during a day. 100% of them will make that their destination. Starbucks is a little bit different. In the post-development, not everybody gets in their car and makes a trip to Starbucks. It's the person driving to work, and they pull in there for coffee because they see the Starbucks. So, they're called pass-by trips, diverted trips. There are already people in the area who are just stopping to Starbucks because it's there, and it's not the sole reason of their trip. So, that's why the trip generation in the evening comes down, and in the morning is really, it's small, 75 trips in the peak hour, so. You know, I know that's, there are other issues here. If any of the counselors have any, you know, we're, don't want to get too complicated and into the nitty-gritty, so.
Is there anybody else?
Sticking to proponents, anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. We're going to open it up to opponents. Anybody opposed of this? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. We're going to open it up to counselors, I believe. Counsel, we're going to start off with Counselor Cogliandro, since it's, I believe, in his ward. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just, I'm really excited about the urgent care facility. I believe our community needs one. And I also, just as a small-business owner, I want to thank you for what you're doing for Pizza Days, giving them a new facility. That's a very, very stand-up thing to do, so thank you for that. You guys answered a lot of my questions. I just, so, one of them was curb cuts on American Legion Highway. The other is, are they going to have access off of Everett Street to enter Starbucks, or is it just going to be either through the plaza or off of the highway?
No, they have a driveway off Everett Street. It's a two-way driveway. They can either enter or exit on Everett Street.
Okay, and do you just, off the top of your head, you know how many parking spots are in there?
We meet the parking regulations for the two sites. I believe the Starbucks has approximately 17, and the urgent care is in 30-something. It's about 50 spaces there on-site.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Keefe. Thank you, Mr. President. Just one of the, I already reviewed this, and I thought it was pretty satisfying, especially, like you said, with the urgent care. I know a lot of people that I talked to go to Saugus, saw it to Malden, Medford. With the Starbucks, obviously, I think it's going to, I'm not going to, I'm not a traffic study specialist, but I do feel it could be, and especially in the initial phase with the excitement of the trips, the trip generation, I would just be willing, asking if you'd be willing, and this will be a big difference-maker for me, to offer and have peak service details until the traffic, the initial traffic subsides, if that's three months or six months, or until, I think, everyone sees fit that there's some traffic mitigation being taken care of.
Certainly, we'll work with the city on making sure the launch is successful. I'd like to bring up the proposed development plan again because I want you to see, this was given a lot of thought by our team. If you can, if you can see how many cars we can get in queue there. It's well in excess of what is required under the Starbucks model. And so, there may be some confusion initially. That could happen, and we will, with our own staff or conjunction with the police, make sure that there's no confusion. But what we've come to know in doing developments like this, once you, you know, we get addicted to coffee, right? You get to know the drill after a while. I'm sure after a few months that this will just come. But the queuing there is really excessive. You can see on that plan, although it's kind of small, the cars could go, I don't know if we have a cursor, but you can bring it all the way back. I can't imagine how many cars could go and then return back that way and go that way. It might be 25 cars.
And I agree. I think that the queuing is good where it circles around, but I think the initial, the initial few months, it could be...
We'll have my own staff there.
They're driving the wrong way, you know the drill.
We'll work with the safety officer in town, whoever that may be, and see if we can pull this off without a hitch.
Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. You had mentioned being here, what, 15 years ago now? It's amazing. Doesn't seem like that long, but I'll say this, and just, I guess, for the edification of the city counselors who weren't here, when your proposal first came up to do all of that development over at Bell Circle, you know, we talk a lot up here about development and developers, and oftentimes, developers say they're going to do one thing, and then it kind of gets modified, then it gets forgotten about, then nobody up here remembers, the council changes, and then we wind up with a completely different project. But I just want to say, from my experience in dealing with you, Paul, you, everything you said you were going to do, you did, and more. You know, there was never an issue of having to have you come back before the council. You've, you know, it's hard for people to remember what that was like when you first took it over, but you've done a tremendous job here. And one of the things that I have preached, Mr. President, since I've been here, I'm not a, you know, this is commercial development. This is not residential, high-density residential, that quite honestly, I am not in favor of, not for a city like ours. But what's happened has happened here in the city, but you have been primarily focused on commercial development. And even more important, something that I really like that I've talked about for a long time, is redevelopment, commercial redevelopment, taking old buildings, old areas, and making them new and vibrant again. And this is, these are the type of projects that, for me, are so easy to vote on. I mean, I know we're not going to, but I could vote on this tonight. You know, it's something that's going to make that area better, and it's going to clean it up. I mean, right now, not to say that it does, but you talk about the bank, it's been, I mean, there's a lot there that just doesn't really mesh with that, with that area, and I think when this is said and done, it's going to be a real tribute to the city, and it's going to be a real credit, once again, you know, for what you're capable of. So, thank you, Paul, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate those kind words. And we realize that this is the gateway to the city, and it's not finished, and we want to finish it to be commensurate with what we, I think we can do even a better job in Phase 2 than we did in Phase 1. We know a little bit more, and we happen to think the end users are appropriate and a good, be a good addition to the city.
Counsel Rotundo.
Kind of echoing Counsel Rizzo's comments, and in fact, I think myself and Judge Kala at that time kind of gave you the one-two, if I'm not mistaken, and I think Counselors Ambudo was there at that time, and was far at the, and I got to tell you, you know, you are a man of your word, and actually, I remember the comments that you made then, and I reflect on them now, that you are taking a risk. And back then, you were taking a risk. The economics weren't there, the site was not there, the idea of building it up wasn't there, the anchor stores were not there, and we were perplexed, but you did it. And so, having that track record is a valuable institutional piece of knowledge that myself and Counselor Rizzo hold, and obviously, former Counselor, Counselors Ambudo holds as well. And so, I will be voting for this project. I believe that you will work successfully with our planners in order to ensure to any of the issues of queuing that have been rightfully brought up by Counselor Keefe, are dealt with appropriately, and thank you for helping out, you know, Pizza Days and so forth, as echoed by Counselor Cogliandro, and you have my full support.
Thank you. Counsel.
Counsel Maravito. Mr. President, just to circle back to what my colleague mentioned earlier. Were you, is it 25 cars that the drive-through of Starbucks could handle?
It's actually about, you could pack 25 cars in there. We've actually done studies, and there are studies that are done. The peak queuing, after the initial excitement is over, is actually no more than 12 or 13. That's pretty much, 90% of the stores have 12 or 13, and, you know, on the outside, you may have 14. We have plenty of queuing to handle, 14 or 15 cars. The cars are going to come in from, they either come in from American Legion, they can't just turn right and go into the queuing lane. That's a one-way out only, so they're actually going to have to come into the site, like loop around to the Everett Street entrance, and then get... the Everett Street entrance, and then get in the line. So we have all that area to queue by not allowing them just to turn off of American Legion Highway and then get into the queue line. So we have upwards of fifteen spaces to queue, and, you know, it could probably go to twenty if it goes all the way down to the entrance of American Legion.
One location specifically I would look at is on McCullin Highway. If you take a look at that Starbucks in the morning all the way up until eleven AM, you have cars that circle around the drive-through and go out into McCullin Highway. And I think my colleague, when he brought this to your attention, this is something we want to avoid, because it causes, it takes up the whole breakdown lane. So that's something, that's one specific location you would definitely want to take a look at. One question, the inception date of construction, when, once you get approved, when would you start?
Bank of America's moved out and their lease terminates on four-thirty. We'd like to start, well, maybe we'll do it at our own risk, I'm not sure, the demolition early next month. So if that's what you're asking, when we intend to start moving, doing the demolition, could, you could see it in the first two weeks of May.
And how long do you think is the estimated development time?
All right, so that's a more complicated question, because we're going to be doing, we've got to do phases of development, so it's probably going to be a little more than a year, maybe fourteen months, because we're in Essence Building, three buildings. We're going to build the Starbucks building along with a Pizza Days building at the same time, run temporary utilities to Pizza Days, then knock down the balance of fifty-five American Legion Highway and build Convenient MD. There's great expense associated with keeping Pizza Days in business during this. That was a commitment I made to him. He's a small business, he's got five years left to go on his lease, we could have worked, thrown him out, but we're going to keep him in business, he's only going to be out of, out of business for a week in this whole process. So if we were not doing that, it would be in eight months, once and done, but it's probably going to be more like twelve months to fourteen months from the time we start.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Rotundo.
Point of information?
Okay.
Just so people understand, the, the queuing of twenty-five cars, as you alluded to, if you want to use a comparison, the queuing for the Starbucks in East Boston is actually, I believe, nineteen, because I remember reading their proposal on Boadman Street, so that, just to give you all a little bit of an understanding.
Thank you. This is also obviously going to go to zoning. If I can just make a few comments, I, I, I think everybody has been waiting for a Starbucks to come in, a second Starbucks, but a full-service, freestanding building to come into the city, so I think that's being welcomed here in Riviere. I, I too am concerned about the traffic. One of your engineer, I believe it was, that, he spoke regarding this study, was, was it an actual traffic study that was done? Because I didn't get a copy of that, and I'm not sure if that was passed along to the other councilors.
We have a traffic.
Do we have any, do we have any documentation, or was it an actual study done for that area?
There was an actual, there's an actual study. We have a trip generation memo which we received today.
I don't, what, what is a trip generation, explain that to me, I'm sorry.
So that, that.
Is that, that from a traffic study company that does this?
Yes, yes, Bayside Engineering, and they determine how many trips are going to be present, you know, people coming in and out.
Yeah.
And so any roadway study they do is based upon the trip generation which they do. Mass Highway has said they don't need a traffic study, we don't need to study those lights, because that's all going to be improved, and there's already traffic studies existing there, and we're not going to have any real impact in those numbers, because they're so, you know, the, the traffic going through there is, is tremendous.
True. And, and I guess my major concern there, like councillor Keith and some of the other councilors stated, is how much impact is that, is this Starbucks going to cause there? And I, I, I appreciate the fact of helping out and accommodating the city with details, because I think that's, that was something that I was going to bring up, so you actually took the words right out of my mouth on that, and I think that's a big help to figure out how the traffic is going to be sustained over there, because that's my major concern. We welcome the, the, the store, and, and the development, and the redevelopment of that area is, is great for the city, so, but like, my only concern is the traffic, that, that, that store is going to cause, so that's just my major concern with, with the development.
So Bayside Engineering is a traffic engineer who I engage specifically to determine how much increase or decrease there would be in traffic pre and post-development. Ben, as lead engineer, it was, directed him to do that, and we just got those results today. We should have brought them to you probably in advance, we didn't have time. But the net result is, overall, it's less traffic, but a little bit more traffic in the morning. We'll try to work that out with the safety officer and the police. And I've done a lot of drive-throughs. I've, I've got Dunkin' Donuts, I've done for, I built their headquarters, and I understand this, and I, I believe that we're going to be okay. It would be a complete failure, my part, if we saw cars out on American Legion Highway.
Great. And if you can just bring that to the zoning, when, when we hear this in zoning, that would be fantastic. Okay. Thank you. Okay. On to, if we can hold on and, yes, the ward councillor is on his way for the next public hearing, so I'd like to push that off a little bit, and welcome back Mr. Fiske, if we can have a suspension of rules, and Mr. Fiske, number twenty-three.
Calendar item number twenty-three, communication from the city auditor relative to the certification of Free Cash.
Good evening, everybody. Rich Fiske, CFO, 281 Broadway, Riviere. We have recently just received our Free Cash certification from the Department of Revenue for our general fund, Basic Operating Fund, and also our Water and Soil Enterprise Fund. With those certifications come ordained transfers that you have before you tonight. Basically, every time Free Cash is done, the first thing we do is we come up here, we put our money in the respective reserve accounts for the general fund, which is the stabilization account, as well as the retained earnings stabilization account for water and soil. We also have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars we propose that we put into our OPEB Liability Trust account, which, as you probably know, is for our health insurance for our retirees, and we also have our transfer into the capital improvement stabilization account. And again, all of these, except for the OPEB, have been ordained by the council, and this is just the legislative action to move that money, so happy to answer any questions on that.
Any councilors wishing to speak? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. We're going to have four separate roll calls on this.
So the first transfer, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, thirty-three dollars from Free Cash to the General Stabilization Fund? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fiori is absent. Councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serena is absent.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved. Next is, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, seven-hundred-eleven dollars from Free Cash to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fiori is absent. Councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serena is absent. Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that transfer has been approved. Third request, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from Free Cash to the OPEB Trust Fund? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fiori is absent. Councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serena is absent. Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes. And the final request, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars from the Water and Soil Free Cash to the Water and Soil Stabilization Fund? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fiori is absent. Councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serena is absent. Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved.
Thank you very much. If we can, while we have Mr. Fiske here still, if he can come up to the podium and speak on behalf of a, a late communication regarding the loan order for the Lincoln School window and door replacement. Bonds, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for accepting that late motion. We communicated with the superintendent and the mayor. We realized that we had a timeline to get a loan order before the council and have a public hearing. This is a loan order to replace all the windows and doors in the Lincoln School. It's part of the Mass School Bill and Authority's Accelerator Repair Program. City is eligible for up to seventy-six percent reimbursement on this loan, so the loan order is for three-point-seven million, but the exact amount of the loan will be reduced by the amounts of the reimbursements we get from the MSBA, so you'll approve the gross amount of the bond, and then automatically, any grants that we get will reduce that loan authorization, so just wanted to bring that before us, the council, so you can have a, a public hearing on it. And it was, it was part of the capital plan last year, but we've just got the word that we are eligible to get in the program, so we just wanted to get that before you right away.
And this is going to go to a public hearing? But, great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, back to the order of business.
Calendar item number five, hearing called disordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install new underground electrical service from pole number two-oh-two-four to the property located at seven-twenty-seven Riviere Beach Parkway.
Name and address.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Moses Okokuru. I'm here, my address is one-seventy Metford Street in Malden. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. So for this petition, National Grid is petitioning to install approximately eight foot of conduit from an existing pole on Tap Street towards seven-twenty-seven Riviere Beach Parkway. Thank you. Yes, for the purpose of serving them with electric service.
Okay.
Yep.
Any comments from the councilors?
Can you give us a question?
Yes? Oh, okay. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none. We'll hear from the ward councillor. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Moses, can you just give me a brief description of what you're going to do there? I know you're, you're going to put a conduit, you're going to break up the sidewalk and, and the street.
Yeah.
Anything else you're going to do there?
I, I mean, there's really nothing more. We, you know, we're just breaking the sidewalk to install the conduits, we'll do what we call a secondary siphon of the pole, and then we'll just be heading straight into the property. The contractors will open and, you know, cover the streets as, you know, it is, it was before they started the job. You know, approximately, it's going to be less than a day's work of work, yeah.
And you will replace the sidewalk and the street as you, if you disrupt it?
Yes, they will.
Okay. And if it's concrete, you'll put the concrete there and not tar?
They should do so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah.
Yes, so, should move the, go ahead. Your call.
Shall, shall the city council grant the petition of National Grid for seven-twenty-seven Riviere Beach Parkway? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Fiori is absent. Councillor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serena is absent. Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, councillor President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Okay.
Calendar item number six, hearing called disordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install new underground electric service to a pump station from existing pole number one-eight-four-seven on Rice Avenue.
Welcome again. Name and address again.
So my name is Moses Okokuru. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. My address is one-seventy Metford Street in Malden. For this petition, National Grid is petitioning to install new conduits across Rice Ave to a pump station. I believe it belongs to the city of Riviere. Yeah, just for the purpose of serving them with electric service. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. I know this is in councillor Fiori's ward, but do we have any comments from any other councilors? Okay. Hearing and seeing none from the councilors, what I'd like to do, if there's no objection, is table the vote out of respect for the fact that councillor Fiori isn't here, and we'd give him the, the option to speak on that as well. So if we can table that, we'll table the vote to the next meeting.
Unfinished business, calendar item number seven, proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Riviere by the applicant Enterprise Rental Car Company of Boston relative to an automotive rental car facility in, allowing rental car facilities in the HB District, third and final reading.
We, we have a third and final reading on this?
I object to the third reading.
Okay, we're going to table that?
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by councillor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to provide the city council with all demographic data points by census block.
Councillor Rotundo speaks for itself? Any other comments? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by councillor Rotundo that the mayor request Dr. Barrows to provide the city council with a copy of the remap plan and current scope of work to identify those who are traditionally and most marginalized in our community, which was discussed at the Human Rights Commission meeting of March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Further, that Dr. Barrows be requested to inform the city council of what can be done through the city council to meet these goals.
Councillor Rotundo speaks for itself? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number ten, motion presented by councillor Rotundo that the mayor request Dr. Barrows, director of talent and culture, and city solicitor Paul Capizzi to hold a hostile work environment seminar.
Councillor Rotundo speaks for itself? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Next up is the appointment subcommittee report.
Councillor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we had seven people come before us, appointments to the Election Commission, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Board of Trustees, Human Rights Commission, and Cultural Council. Each one was voted out favorably, and I ask for a roll call. If we can take them all up together, unless anyone has If we can take them all up together, unless anyone has an objection.
We can take them up together.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Cogliandro? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori is absent. Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino is absent. Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Visconti.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The, the first, the first order of business we had tonight had to deal with the metered rates on the four, five, and six families, and the committee agreed to leave this in committee until we have some firm budget numbers for the upcoming FY '23 budget. So that will remain in committee unless there's any objections from members of the council.
No. No objection?
The next item of business was a communication from the city auditor relative to the American Rescue Plan Fund Grant Summary. Mr. Viskey appeared before us. He went over the, went over the presentation that he had put together, the handout. There were no lingering questions, so I think the recommendation was to place that on file.
We're going to place that on file.
Next item of business was on a motion presented by Counsel Rotundo asking the mayor to investigate the feasibility of installing GPS in all city vehicles with the exemption of emergency workers and department heads. Mr. Viskey had indicated that that was going to be part of the budget that he was going to present to the City Council. I believe Counselor Rotundo was satisfied with that, and so as a result, we're going to play, we would like to place that on file as well.
Place that on file.
And the last item of business was a motion also presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor provide an accounting to the City Council of all city-owned phones and who the phones were assigned to, with the exception of police and fire investigators. Again, that was something that Mr. Viskey had indicated was in, in progress right now, and I believe that Counsel Rotundo and members of the committee also recommended that be placed on file as well.
Place on file.
And that will conclude my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. So the next, the next motion is, it's regarding some communications that I'd like to first make a comment about. And before we discuss this matter, I want to make it clear that these chambers aren't meant to be a place where people are openly disrespected, treated unfairly, and a place where voices can't be heard. In fact, it's the opposite. This is a place where the business of the people is discussed and decisions are made to improve this city. As it pertains to the HRC, the commission was established in 1994, and it was created to address issues pertaining to diversity, equity, and inclusion in Riviere. These are very sensitive in delicate times when it comes to issues such as heritage, background, race, et cetera. And it's important that everyone is heard. And that real dialogue can happen in these chambers, and not dialogue driven by personal agendas designed to misalign information and spread negativity throughout the city. All is asked from everybody, is that we enter into these discussions with open minds, civility, and professionalism. That's all is asked. Thank you. Next.
Calendar item number 24, communication from Gina Castiello, 46 Knell Road, relative to the city's Human Rights Commission.
Hi, and thank you for having me. Gina Castiello, 46 Knell Road, VMS. And I'd like to start with some observations, questions, and concerns.
Before you continue, the only thing I ask Gina is you address the chair and not the councilors.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm, I just have some observations, questions, and concerns, and I'd like to read what I have, and then maybe I can get some of my questions answered. So a main issue I would like to really address is the fact that it's been almost one year since I put a complaint in on May 6, 2021. I was denied a public mediation four times by the mayor's office and yet have, and have yet to have anyone reach out to me about the issue for a resolution. My first question is, I have is in regards to Dr. Maristas Barros. On 3/10/22, at the Human Rights Commission meeting I attended, Dr. Barros made a statement that the Human Rights Commission was voted on by the citizens of Riviere, which is a lie. We never voted on this Human Rights Commission, and it was also voted on by the City Council. I would really like some clarification on the process. Exactly how was it determined there need to be a Human Rights Commission in this city and why? My second question in regards to Dr. Barros and other commissioners, if appointed by the mayor, what are other steps a part of the approval process? I would like to know about behavioral standards for members of the Human Rights Commission. Every time I do attend a meeting, I am treated in an extremely dismissive manner and spoken down to. In fact, I was called garbage in this chamber halls by a commission member on 12/222. I can go on and on and on. Most recently, at the April 7 meeting, myself and a group of citizens came to ask questions as I was challenged at the previous meeting by Dr. Barros to have more people show up to voice their concerns. That meeting was the first time they ran too long to hear from the public. It seems very unusual that when the meeting floor was filled with people, the time ran out for a public forum. I think it was deliberate. I bring up these issues because they are all in relation to the approval process and the required credentials. Are we allowing anyone with agenda, within an agenda, to come into our city? If our city councilmen and women aren't willing to hear from their constituents on these matters, then who could we turn to? Because myself and many others are not given a public forum to, a forum for a public discussion on these matters. It should never be a frustrating drawn-out process for simple questions to simply, simple answers to simple questions. At the Human Rights Commission meeting on 12/21, Dr. Lorenzo Garcia was asked, what is the Human Rights Commission modeled after? And he stated, the United Nations. Do you know anything about the United Nations Plan for Agenda 2030? The United States has a Constitution, Bill of Rights, and state constitution that protects all people. In closing, this Human Rights Commission called us constituent, a white supremacist, and me garbage in this chamber hall. Stop gaslighting us constituents, please. And please abolish this racist Human Rights Commission.
Okay. Since, I'm going to answer a couple of the questions that I can. But first, in regards to the creation of the Human Rights Commission, this was created back in 1994 by the former mayor, Robert Haas, God rest his soul. Okay? It has come to one of the, one of the, the thoughts were to bring this back, okay? But it's already, there's an ordinance in place for the HRC. So this was just carried forward just recently. Okay? That's number one. In terms of the steps, just like every other board, okay? The mayor appoints the people that they, that he feels are qualified, and we as a city council approve them or deny them. Okay? That's just the process with the HRC, along with every other board that is, that is on, that is in the city. Okay?
Could I just make a quick statement here that Dr. Maristas Barros, the new director, she claimed that the, you know, it's on video, you can watch the, the meeting on 3/10, that the constituents of Riviere voted for this. We did not vote for this.
I'm, I'm, I can't answer the fact.
Well, I'm bringing up the awareness to the public.
What, what Dr. Barros said, I'm not going to go back and forth with you on this, okay? Number one, I didn't see that meeting. What I am telling you is what, huh? Okay, well, whether it was said or not, what I'm telling you is how it is done. Okay? The mayor appoints the people, and we confirm them. Same, simple as that. Okay? Not voted by the people, not, it has nothing to do with the residents. The appointments are made by the mayor, okay, and confirmed by the City Council. Okay, so we'll get past that. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does, and you would think that the director would know, but that's.
I can't speak on her behalf, but I'm, what you, what I'm telling you.
Well, I'm just asking questions.
I, I understand that, and I'm trying to answer them, Gina. Okay? And what I'm telling you is the proper protocol with this board, along with every other board in the city.
Understandable.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're not going to discriminate, we're not going to, well, I won't use that word, but we're not going to just you, specify the HRC. The process is done with every other board.
Understood.
Okay, great.
Point well taken.
Thank you. I appreciate that. In reference to your request for a public mediation, I believe, and what I believe, and I've seen the chain of emails, okay? The administration has given you the opportunity to meet with the mayor in a private meeting. You denied.
Correct.
You, you, you denied that.
Four times I denied.
Yes.
A private mediation, because I wanted a public mediation to bring it to the public forefront, so the constituents of Riviere can see what's going on with this Human Rights Commission.
I understand that, but a private meeting was, was.
It was denied by me four times, yes.
Okay, I just want to make that noted.
It's clear, yes.
It's not that people are ignoring you, it's just that the fact that you didn't like the response from the mayor's office.
It's not a matter of I didn't like a response, I would like a public forum.
That's your choice, okay? But the mayor, if the mayor is not required to give you a public mediation, okay? A private mediation is what he offered, you denied it, so be it, as far as I'm concerned. It's, it, since you denied that, okay? It's no longer an issue unless you want to bring that back and have a private meeting with him. It's your choice.
Well, I stand before you here that one of the commissioners, Chai Husani, called me garbage in this chamber halls. And she sits on the Human Rights Commission? She's, what about my human rights? What about my civil rights?
Okay, I'm, I'm, Gina, I'm not going to go back and forth, and I can't speak on what people and how they have acted towards, hold on.
She's a commissioner, I'm not, I'm a constituent.
I'll stop this, I'll stop this. Let me speak, okay? I'm not going to go back and forth with you, okay, on what people have said. I can't answer that, okay? And you know what? That is an issue that you need to take up with the HRC director. Okay? Not, this, it has no, your concerns have that concern. How it was, how you were treated there is not our jurisdiction. It has to do with the HRC.
The City Council approves.
Agreed.
And the City Council can also veto the mayor's approval, but the motion has been buried by Mr. Rotundo, and it's gone to god knows where.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I answered that question. Are there any, I believe, I'm not sure if I left anything else on the table, to be honest with you. I, I can go through the approval process one more time, okay? But some of that, what you're asking, is not our jurisdiction. It is, it is the jur, hold on, I'll start the meeting, okay? What I, the, it's not the jurisdiction of the City Council, it's things that you have to address with the HRC, along with the mayor.
According to what I read online, Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
The City Council approves the mayor's appointees, and you could veto any of his choices. And I have, each and every one of you have gotten emails, and I've got no response back from you. You do not, you disrespect me, and you ignore me, just like now, nothing will get resolved. You're telling me to go to the Human Rights Commission. Dr. Barros isn't going to do anything. They, they got rid of one and got another, and she's telling the city.
I'm, I'm just telling you, Gina, no. I'm telling you what our jurisdiction is. If you don't like what our jurisdiction is, I can't change that. Okay? That's it. That's our jurisdiction.
So you're telling me as a constituent, we have a Human Rights Commission, they can call constituents white supremacists.
Gina?
And garbage, and there's no ramifications.
Can I speak? Because I'm going to end this conversation.
Well, you know, I'd like to speak and be heard, because you're just pulling me off.
You've had your three minutes, you've had your three minutes, and I'm going to end this right now.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I?
Hold on one second. I'm just going to end this right now and say, Gina, you have some legitimate concerns. Nobody is doubting that, okay? You have some concerns of how you've been treated, okay? I haven't seen the tapes, I don't know. What I am telling you is, I think it would be best for you to get in touch with the HRC director, along with the mayor, whether it is in a private meeting, okay? I think a private meeting, since you have been disrespected, I think it's best that you sit with them and voice your concerns in a private meeting.
Will the private meeting be held there with rugs and statues?
It doesn't have to be a public forum, okay? It can be in a private meeting. That's what I am suggesting to you, and that's how I'm going to leave that. So other than that, I can't do anything else but give you some suggestions. If you don't wish to take that, that is your choice, and that's fine. So that being said, I am, this, if, if there aren't any more concerns here, I think this, you've said, we've said everything that we can say about this, okay? And now it's up to you.
So the City Council will not take responsibility for vetoing a mayor's appointee for being disrespectful to a constituent? Thank you.
We can't.
Mr. President?
Thank you, thank you. We're going to place on file. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Two, two things, thank you. There is a, a way that you can deal with that. It's called the court system. If you don't like what someone said about you, and you feel that they said something slanderous or libel, you can use the courts. I understand you want transparency, so be it. We can, we can veto, but the mayor can overrule. At the end of the day, that's the way the system works. I know you don't like it, but that's just the way it is.
Don't you work for us? Could I please ask you some more questions? It's going so fast. Please ask a question in regards to this. Did I actually answer last meeting to ask questions? They didn't let me. I just want one question.
Sure. Go ahead. Name and address to the, to the, to the mic. Yes, absolutely. Push the button, name and address.
Sophia Durbano. My address is 86 Atwood Street. So I just want clarification that people who we didn't vote on have authority somehow in this city, and there's no recourse except for a private mediation between her, Dr. Barros, and Arigo. These people are going to be in the public. This is what our whole issue is. It's not with you guys, it's the fact that nobody seems to be, who, who we voted on, the people who we voted on don't seem to be safeguarding us from this, this Human Rights Commission. That's the whole issue, that's it.
Okay, and I, I appreciate it, Ms. Durbano, but what I am saying is, you're saying that, and I know what was said to you, okay? That the people voted the people.
That's not my issue.
Okay? That, on the HRC. I understand that. That is not accurate, okay? It is. It is, it is, it is appointed by the mayor and we confirm them. That is what has happened. So, whatever else was said, I can't answer to that, okay? And I apologize that that-
I didn't bring up anything that was said, I'm just asking directly. Who is responsible then? If it's just the mayor, he appoints these people, these are clearly people he's in favor of, this is, you know, who he appoints, you guys then approve, we have an issue. Our only option is private mediation? Is that what you're telling us? I just want clarification on that.
I, I, yes.
Thank you. Or the courts. Do you really think that that is an okay thing to say? Just go to the court? This is our process, our process is a democracy, a republic, where we vote on people, they represent us, and now we have this Human Rights, which you said was established in 1994-
Yes.
And now it's been reestablished recently.
Okay.
So, it just felt like it came out of nowhere on us and that these people then subvert themsel- uh, assert themselves and start saying names, saying out accusations, that's all we have an issue with. And we want some sort of public debate on it.
I, I guess that's where the question rely-
Point of inquiry?
The question, go ahead.
Point of inquiry?
State your point.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to Ms. Castielo. Do you have, are these audible? These insults are audible on the, the YouTube, uh, channel, on these videos?
Um, on, as far as Dr. Barrows claiming or being called garbage?
You said you, there was people called white supremacists, garbage, things like that, are they audible?
I was called garbage after the meeting in December was suspended. And yes, we have it on video, it's not on, uh, the meeting was suspended, but we do have it on video. Her car, she was standing here and I was talking to the reverend and I walked over. I had my sign that said, "Respect all human rights and abolish the Human Rights Commission", and she called me garbage in this chamber halls. Did I see your question? Yes, I do have it.
Okay, so, so, but the reason I ask, can you please send me, I'm the chairman of the appointment subcommittee, can you please send me the timestamps of that so that I can review them?
Yep.
Send me the video, the link to the video and the time, because to me, that behavior is unacceptable in these chambers for anybody.
It's absolutely unacceptable.
For anybody. So if someone, especially a resident, is being insulted, we wouldn't allow any of us to speak to each other that way up here. We respect each other and we don't speak that way to any of you. So that's not okay with me. So please get me that information and that's it, we'll get, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
I, thank you.
Thank you.
If you can do that, that would be great. Um, Counselor Keith?
Uh, thank you, and just one, one brief comment, and I think that you got, you will all appreciate this. You know, when, when, when the, first of all, the HRC, you know, they don't have any authority over you. I mean, I mean, I know that that's the feeling, I don't know why. There's a, there's a library commission, there's a cultural council, there's an elders affair, there's no authority over you. I mean, so, I don't know why there's this feeling that, that one group, let me talk, is, has a thor, they have, they meet and they, they discuss things that are important to some rep, some people in the city and they, they talk about it. There's really no authority, you know, so, so there is no authority over you, um, number one. Just like there's no authority on the cultural commission over you, or the arts commission, or the li, or the library commission. I'm talking, I'm, there's no authority. I don't know, and so, I know that this, this seems to be, uh, a group that you, you seem to have some offense to, and I get it. And so, secondly, if people are, you know, people that are representing on these councils and commissions, no matter what council it is, if it's a library commission, election, if they're being disrespectful in that manner, yeah, they come in front, back in front of us in two years or a year, just like when we had the original appointments last year, very controversial appointments. We did not appoint everyone that came in front of us. I got chased out of the building, I mean, out of the building, right? The whole council did. So, just like, you know, you, you understand, so just don't, so, we got chased out of the building, we got walked out, okay? I, I wa, but, but what I'm saying is, is we don't agree with everything that someone says. They don't represent each one of us, they do have, and I'm sure that there's many good ones. I'm not, I don't know what you're referring to, do, am I gonna say that I don't believe you? No, I'm not gonna say that. Yes, I hope that you can give some information to, um, um, Counselor Cogliandro. And if they do, if these are happening and they come back in front of us in two years or a year when the, where that appointment's up, it's gonna be stuff that we decide on whether or not they do get confirmed again, okay? But just, just wanna say it again, the library commission has no authority over you, okay? The election commission has no authority over you. The cultural council has no authority over you. The HRC has no authority. They're just commissions and boards in the city that help, do help in the decision-making process. And it's, it's informative, and there, there's lots of different committees. I, I hope that you can expand your knowledge and go out there and see these other ones, but for whatever reason, this one has become very politically divisive, and I really wish that you would actually go ahead and listen and watch what they see and say, and then make an informed opinion, okay? Let them have a meeting, thank you.
Thank you for that, Patrick.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, um, what I wanna say about that is, is what I'm trying to do is bring some awareness, because, uh, another constituent in Revere that was called a white supremacist took a private mediation that was held in this chamber halls, and there were some very influential people there, and there was nothing in the papers and nobody knows about it. So I wanna know, why isn't there any transparency to this Human Rights Commission? And that's a very legitimate question, they're hiding something, and it's obvious, because when you have Rachel Rollins, the district attorney of Massachusetts, in this chamber halls in a private mediation, and nobody knows about it, they're hiding something, and that's what I wanna do, bring this to public awareness.
Thank you, Gina. Okay. Back to the regular order of business?
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on the application of Revere Dev LLC 304 Squire Road, requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and construct a new fast food restaurant with a drive-through at 304 Squire Road.
Chicken sandwich, anyone?
Uh, name and address for the record.
Attorney Jerry Dambrosio, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, on behalf of Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen, the applicant in this matter. Uh, I wanna thank you for hearing our quick presentation. I noticed that Aaron Novoselsky has a Celtics tie on, I believe they're playing tonight. All right, I, yep, I'm, I'm up against the clock, so I'll keep that in mind. Uh, we're here on, uh, behalf of an application to convert, uh, 304 Squire Road, which is currently a defunct Honeydew Donuts facility. Uh, it's been defunct for a year and, to be quite honestly, a bit of a blight on Squire Road for the past year. Uh, the petitioner before you is requesting that, uh, the current property be redeveloped into a modern, state-of-the-art Popeyes restaurant facility. Uh, by way of background, it's important to note, this is a GB district. Uh, restaurant use is allowed by right. Uh, the implementation of a drive-through, which is what we're asking for here, is the special permit request. Uh, also important to note, by way of background, is that this facility has been some sort of food distribution place, it's been a restaurant, it's been a sub shop, going back to the 1970s at the very least. It was Santoro's Subs. Um, at some point thereafter, it, uh, evolved into Tony Lina's Subs, then to Honeydew, and, uh, here we are today, asking that it be converted into a Popeye. So it's a, uh, it's a very known use for this area. It's been there for my adult, actually my entire lifetime, um, in, in terms of being a, a food, uh, location. Uh, it's also important to note that in 2011, this very, uh, city council voted on a special permit for this site, uh, for fast food use and a drive-through, uh, and it was approved, okay? So again, 2011, the same petition came before the city council and it was already approved, uh, by the city. At the time, it was for the Honeydew, a drive-through for the Honeydew Donuts. Uh, it's important to note that the project before you today, in comparison to what's there today, i- is very different. Um, this is what I like to call a win-win situation. Uh, because on the one hand, you have, uh, uh, a corporate-owned facility like a Popeye, so there are no franchisees here, yet you have a, a national corporation that puts together a budget every year for upkeep and maintenance. That's who's buying this land, has purchased this land and will be operating this business. It is not a franchisee, it is not a small business person. And of course, small businesses are, are the backbone of our economy, but there is something to be said for market brand, a budget, someone that, uh, a neighbor can call and get an automatic response to here, uh, with the Popeyes. Uh, it's important to note, this will be a, a new building, state-of-the-art, fully code compliant, which is not the case for the building that's there right now. Uh, it's important to note that this project calls for, uh, new landscaping, uh, plan for the neighbors. You're gonna have new buffer zone, and I, I think you all have it in your package, but there's gonna be new buffer zone along the periphery of the project with new landscaping, new trees, new fencing, new shrubbery, all with the input of the neighbors, by the way. In essence, Popeye has said, tell us what kind of landscaping you want, and we will do the best we can to put it in, uh, with, uh, collaboration, uh, from Site Plan Review and Frank Strangie's office. Uh, I'd also say that, uh, it's important to note that this is also a superior project because we are closing off all access to Ward 6. Both Derby Street will be closed and Sagurni Street will be closed. Again, that's an important note, because the current project that's there, which is being, which can be operated as a matter of right, uh, allows for traffic to flow into Derby Street, okay? I'd also note that, as a matter of right, the current owner could open up an accessway onto Sagurni Street. There is no special permit requirement for that either. So, it's important to note that this is a far superior project because it cuts the tra, traffic flow into the city of Revere and redirects it out onto Squire Road. And finally, apart from having a brand-new building, brand-new landscaping, brand-new sidewalks, uh, improving the traffic flow, you have one other benefit. You're gonna be removing one of the last ugly billboards on Squire Road. I know that that's been a project of this city council for the last decade and that you've seen a lot of these billboards come down in the city and be replaced. You recall, there's a giant billboard on top of this facility, I don't know how big it is, but it must be, it must be 20 by 15 or 20 by 25. That'll also be coming down as part of this project, so that I saw will be gone as well. Um, I can tell you that, uh, I've submitted, uh, an updated plan which shows the landscaping and the traffic improvements and the new structure that's there. I can also tell you that over the last week, I've been heavily engaged in talking to a number of the neighbors in the area. Um, some may be here tonight, I'm not sure, uh, but we, we, I know that I've talked to probably a half dozen in the last week, I know that I'll continue to talk to more over the course of the next week, and, uh, uh, you know, Popeyes all airs, uh, but I think it's, it's important to note for this city council, that at this point, uh, this is not about, this is not a use issue. Special permit was granted in '11. This is about the, uh, drive-through that will encircle the new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Uh, any, this being a hearing, any other proponents? Uh, if you can come up and speak? Name and address?
Tony Zambuto, 87 High Street.
Welcome.
Uh, I'm a pro, a proponent for this, uh, for obvious reasons. We all wanna see that ugly site revised, and I think this is a great proposal, so. I, I'm, I'm sure the ward council is for it, but I'm speaking in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zambuto. Any other proponents? Name and address?
Excuse me, Gennaro Cataldo. I am a resident of 35 Augusta Street, I'm also the owner of 140 Derby Road, which abuts directly to this property. Uh, I come before you on behalf of my residents, and they're two very hard-working families that live at 140. Uh, the restaurant is the only one, as you know, on the residential side eastbound that is gonna be going in. I'm a proponent of it. I've been working with Revere Dev in good faith over the past week or so, since I found out about this project, to make sure that it, it, it worked with our neighborhood, and so far, that's all I've seen, is them working in good faith. Uh, let's see here, the only remaining consideration for your review is the hours of operation, that's my biggest concern. So, uh, most of the Popeyes, you'll find, they have a drive-through that's open during the week, till about 10 o'clock at night, and weekends till about 11. You can do this research yourself on, uh, the internet, looking at the various Popeyes in the area. That's all that I ask you all, through the chairman, of course, to consider as part of this special permit. Other than that, they have worked very well with us so far. I only expect that to happen through Site Plan Review in good faith with the city, so I'm a proponent of it, uh, and that is what I wanted to share with you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Those opposed? Yes, welcome. Name and address for the record.
Michelle Kelly, 99 Derby Road.
Okay.
Um, I guess, before I go into why I'm opposed to it, I do have a question as to, who are the abutters that got notice? Because it doesn't seem like any of the people that I spoke to on Derby Road had even knew that this was happening. So, they didn't, they weren't able to come here tonight, a lot of them felt blindsided. Um, they didn't have enough time to, to be here tonight to state their opposition, so. And I know that when Honeydew Donuts was the proposal for a drive-through for Honeydew Donuts, I did get notice for that, and somehow I did not get notice for this, and a lot of other people in the street didn't either. I just wanted to answer to that, I guess.
I guess, and I was trying to get that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess, uh, there is, uh, notices went out to the abutters within 300 feet, uh, is what I'm gathering.
And do you know if that was the same requirement when the Honeydew Donuts was, um, when that was on the table for a drive-through?
I would have to believe so, I can't, I'm, I'm not, I'm-
Because I got notice, because I'm still at 99 Derby, and I got notice then and I didn't get notice now.
I understand, and I, I can't speak for what was done, um, back then, but, um, uh, what I, what's required is, uh, 300 feet, so that's, that's to answer your question.
Understood. Um, the sad part about that is, is that almost every resident that I've spoken to, at least a half a dozen, is in opposition to this. We pay very high property taxes, we have a lot of pride of ownership on Derby Road, and all we do is pick up litter in front of our houses, morning, noon, and night, from drive-through restaurants that are on Squire Road. Derby Road is used as a cut-through, so all of that, Squire Road, all, any restaurants that are down there, they go to, they patron the, the establishment, they come down Derby Road as a cut-through and throw out all their trash on our street. This is only gonna exacerbate that problem, we're gonna have more of it, we're gonna have more traffic. I understand that the drive-through is not going to be able to go down Derby Road from, exiting from the drive-through, but that doesn't prevent them from going onto Derby Road otherwise, once they do exit the drive-through, even if they went back onto Squire. So we are gonna get increased traffic, it's gonna increase accidents because of that, it's gonna increase the litter, it's gonna increase rodents probably from a restaurant being there. And I understand that it's commercially zoned, I do, but it's not exactly the same commercial zoning as you would have, say, on, uh, Route 1 in Sagus. You do have residences right next door and right around it, so they have to be taken into consideration, that this isn't just a completely commercial area. Um, and like I said, we're just extremely, everyone that I spoke to that didn't have enough time to come here tonight is extremely opposed to this, and they just feel like they're being blindsided with this. So if anything, I, I, I don't know if we can go back and look at that 300 feet, if we can make sure that everybody within that 300 feet did in fact get notice. Um, and we can at least make sure of that, because, or, I mean, a, and then, if that's not the case, would this establishment be, um, willing to, to do street cleaning from all that garbage that's gonna go on our street? Would they be willing to do that? Would we be willing to somehow redirect traffic on Derby Road and make it a one-way in the opposite direction so that traffic can no longer even go down Derby Road? It would, you know, the one-way would be an opposite? I mean, that might be, uh, something that we'd wanna do if the restaurant was permitted to open. And also, hours of operation is a big concern as well.
Agreed, okay. Um, this is gonna go to zoning, so we're not voting on this, this evening. So, uh, if there are any people that have some concerns, um, I would ask them to come to the zoning meeting and, and, and voice their concerns.
And when would that be and how would they get notice of that being?
Um, I think this is gonna get, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, that this is gonna get referred to zoning on May 9th, is that correct? Yes, so May 9th, it's gonna be, um, put in front of the zoning subcommittee.
And do you know if that's an afternoon meeting or an evening?
5:30 PM. None of these councils are awake at 5:30 in the morning. Kidding, kidding, thank you, thank you. Yes, um, and- Yes, and per Madam Clerk, there are no further notice regarding this, so that's gonna get mailed out. So just check the city calendar. Next.
Hi.
Name and address.
Kelly Rosendus, 75 Grover Street.
Okay.
I live at the corner of Derby and Grover. Very upset, actually. Excuse me. But I don't think this was the best plan for the end of that street. I personally pick up trash every day, about a trash full of trash, from Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, Taco Bell, beer cans, and I understand you have to put a business there. Do I think it's the best business for that area? Absolutely not. I understand that you need to put a business there, but if you're gonna put a business there, work with the residents. Make that a one-way, so we don't have to deal with the traffic going through Market Basket, up that street. I know, you know as well as I know, they're gonna go out onto Squire Road, and they're gonna bang right up Derby Street, because they're gonna wanna cut through and go back on the highway. We get all that traffic. I do not think it's fear to the tax-paying residents that we have to deal with that on a day-to-day basis. We're just looking for a little bit of help to work with us. I mean, they can make it beautiful all they want, but I can guarantee you in a month, because as Honeydew was, there was trash everywhere, and there was rats everywhere. We just don't wanna deal with that anymore, and we're just asking for a little help.
I understand. I understand. Thank you. It, it is, like I said, it's going to zoning, so there are.
One more question?
Go ahead.
I'm pretty sure Honeydew was denied the drive-through, and I would like you to look into that.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was denied for them.
Okay, we'll do that, and we, we take your concerns seriously, obviously, and, you know, as a resident, so, like I said, it's going to zoning. Decision hasn't been made. Conditions haven't been put in front of us as well, so I think it would be to your advantage that you voice your concerns at the zoning subcommittee as well.
I will do.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing, and we're gonna open it up to City Councilors. We'll start off with the Ward Counselor, Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, first, well, first I wanna thank you for holding off, and to the public, I apologize, I was detained at work tonight, so I apologize for my tardiness to the meeting, but I'm glad I was able to make it, and I'm glad I was able to make it for this particular hearing. Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Dambrosio. I have a question for Mr. Dambrosio. Because we are, we are solely voting, this, what we're voting on is the drive-through. So if we denied the drive-through, Popeyes owns the property, tomorrow, what can you guys do? Can you, you can go in there?
By right, this is what people don't understand, and they need to understand this, okay? The City Council approved the special permit in 2011, okay? I know that some people here maybe are misremembering, and I can understand that, it's been 10 years, but not only did you approve it, it's on record in the chain of title, okay? So the, the use is already approved, right? It was the drive-through that the current owner never put in, or the previous owner didn't put in. So that allows us this day, today, to use it as a Popeye, and to have access down Derby Street, and if they want, as a matter of right, out to Sagurni Street as well. That's why I think that there's some confusion about this, and again, as far as Popeye goes, they're more than willing to sit and, I'm sorry, they're more than willing to sit and, and talk to folks about trash issues and litter issues, because they're concerned about that as well. But the project that's before this City Council is way better than what you currently have there. What you currently have is a dilapidated building that is not up to code, that has exits out onto Derby, and if they want, by right, out onto Sagurni. Not to mention, an ugly billboard on the front. So I, you know, again, this is a situation where you're weighing things and saying, "What's better for the community?" And I have a hard time believing that after sitting down and talking to us, any reasonable neighbor would say that they're better off with that building with, you know, a Dunkin' Donuts or another Honeydew, with Egress out onto Derby or out onto Sagurni, that somehow that's better than what's being proposed here today, right? There has to be an element of reasonableness in understanding what the project is about. And I, I'm very confident that when people see what this project is, they're gonna say, "Wow, it is significantly better than what's there now," and it's an upgrade to the community, not a downgrade, especially when you factor in the sidewalks, the signs, the new, the new fencing along the side, the landscaping beds, and the, the, the traffic flow, stopping the traffic flow from going into Sagurni or Derby. So it's, it's really more about understanding what is currently there now, as opposed to what it will be. And I think that when neighbors really hash that out and look at it, they're gonna realize that it's a far superior project, and on top of it, they're gonna have a corporate neighbor that really cares about their image, right? They have a budget for this, they have a protocol for this, and they, they, they're not in the business of having dilapidated restaurants. That's, that's not their image. And so I think that at the end of the day, I, I'm more than happy, I've given out some more cards, I'm willing to talk to anyone about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold on, I'm gonna go, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to be clear, that if, if we in zoning and the City Council were to deny this, is it a special permit, correct, or for the, for the configuration of the drive-through that you're requesting?
Sure.
You can revert back to the 2011 plan and put that drive-through and keep the Derby Road access, right?
You, you can keep the use as is, which is what's being done now, which is the accessway out to Derby, which is an old dilapidated building, no, no fencing around it. Look, just drive by it. I'm not pulling the wool over anyone's eyes, just drive by it and take a look at it. So I, I, I think the proof's in the pudding, and you see what a mess it is right now. Now, I will say this, the fact that it's been a restaurant of one sort or another over the past 50 years lends it pretty easily to what it's gonna be now, but I will tell you, there's been a lot of developers who've looked at that parcel, they wanted to buy the black lace lingerie facility, which is next door, which is also dilapidated, and, you know, there's been talk about retail on the first floor and five stories of apartments up top. So again, it comes back to reasonableness, and what do we wanna see on these sites? Do we want a, a new building, state-of-the-art, that takes into consideration the neighbors in cutting back the flow, or are we gonna allow other kinds of zoning relief that could lead to five stories of apartment houses with retail on the first? Again, I'm, I'm speaking aloud, because I, I view this project as a win-win. It truly is, and I think the neighbors, once they, all the neighbors I've talked to, once they learn about what it currently is being used for, and what it's gonna be used for in the future, and all of the conditions that we're gonna impose, it, it, there's no other way to look at it as an enhancement for that community.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, to actually, well, the members of the public, I suppose, I can confirm that in the fall, that a gentleman, a developer, had approached me in conversations, that they wanted to turn that part, that parcel, those two parcels into mixed, mixed use, retail on the bottom, perhaps a coffee shop, and apartments on top. I listened to my residents, I know the residents of Ward 6 have made clear, they don't want apartments, they don't want that, and I made clear that I wanted to keep Squire Road commercial use, for commercial use. We have the, the old mobile site down the road that's been vacant for literally 10 years, that every summer is overgrown and disgusting. You know, the Honeydew the last two years has been overgrown, and if I lived there, if I lived on Derby Road, I would be, you know, I wouldn't wanna be looking at what, you know, they've been parking vans and stuff. I do think that this is a reasonable proposal, but if the residents come out and the residents don't want it, then, you know, it reverts to by right, and if, you know, you keep, you, you open the Popeyes there, you keep the Derby Road access, you don't improve it, if that's what they, you know, if, if that's, if enough residents want it like that, you know, we, we can keep it like that. But I think this proposal is going to benefit the neighborhood. It's going to shut off Derby Road access. You're gonna have nice trees and plantings along that. And yes, in the Traffic Commission, we could possibly, I could, we could possibly discuss changing configuration to, making Derby Road a one-way, you know, one, from Grover Street going one-way out to Squire Road. That's all, you know, that can all be done. But if they want, if the residents wanna keep it the way it is, then, you know, maybe that's something we do too. So let's see, you know.
And the applicant, just for the record, the applicant has no objection to converting Derby Road into a one-way down to Squire Road. They don't, they don't, they don't care one way or the other.
I didn't think they would.
But that, but I'm not sure if all the, now, I, I'm not sure that all the residents of Derby Road would agree with that, as I've heard some conflicting things, but I guess my point is, that's an independent issue from this, right? The city can do that on its own at any time.
On its own. Agreed. Counselor O.
It, well, I would just say that, to Mr. Cataldo's point, through you, Mr. President.
Sure.
I do agree that the hours, if we, to include in the special permit, to keep them what the other Popeyes locations are, you know, McDonald's and Taco Bell across the road, there, there aren't residences around them.
Agreed.
But where the Popeyes will be going, there, we do have to be mindful of the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And with that, I would ask that we, you know, we keep the drive-through till, like, 10:00 PM on weeknights, 11:00 on weekends, or what have you, but we can iron all that out in zoning as we discuss more.
I guess.
And I'm willing, again, anybody that would like to talk to me, they have my number and my card, please call me. It's a collaborative effort on the part of Popeyes, and they're more than happy to, to get more feedback.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the constituents and the crowd, through you, we hear your concerns, and we understand them, and we appreciate you coming up tonight and speaking on behalf of them. Just through you, to Mr. Dambrosio, there will be a, a complete new structure being built on this, on this site, right? Because I think that might help the, the neighborhood understand a little better, that that building is not going to be the structure that's there when, when Popeyes is developed. It's, it's gonna be a total new use, and, and for them to understand that, and, and the redevelopment of the site, not allowing the cows just to pour onto Derby Road, might give them a better understanding where the new structure will stand and how the, the lot will be facilitated.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's gonna be a brand-new structure, state-of-the-art, and what's important about that is that all the ventilation system, all of the trash upkeep, all of that's gonna be subject to new protocol that they have in place. Again, it's, it's important to remember that many of these large companies, they use consultants. And when I tell you they use consultants, they use consultants for everything. They use consultants for the size of their toilet bowls. They use consultants for the amount of trash pickup they need out front. They need, they use consultants for the kind of rooftop decks they use. And so these establishments have been through a vetting process because of the corporate image that they wanna upkeep, and they're heavily scrutinized and well-financed every year to make sure that the upkeep is there. I dare say that Popeyes will not look like this Honeydew has looked over the last year or two. It's just not in their corporate image, it's not how they're financed, and indeed, it'll be a state-of-the-art facility with, with, you know, state-of-the-art landscaping, fencing, and lighting, and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is gonna be a wonderful establishment, but I do sympathize with the residents for cleaning up garbage all the time, having their Derby Street, you know, a freeway. So maybe, moving forward, we could make Derby Road a one-way. I don't see, I, I think that's a, a big possibility, but also, maybe we can coordinate with the, the establishment and have them go down the street maybe once, a couple of times a week, and have it, and clean it up, because I know there's establishments in, in Revere, I, I won't mention their names, but they go out every single day on Broadway, and they clean up around their property, they clean up down Broadway, they clean up garbage, they clean up litter, they don't have to do that, but they want their establishment to be clean, and they want, and they take pride in Revere. And maybe, if this establishment comes in, they can do the same thing. You know, they can go down to Derby Road and clean up the garbage instead of these people cleaning up the garbage every single day. So I sympathize, I think this would be a great establishment for Squire Road, that building is, is, you know, rundown, but I do sympathize with the residents too, and maybe we can come up with an agreement.
Great, thank you. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Jerry, for, you know, for being here and explaining the project. It certainly, from the perspective of building that's there now to what's gonna be there, there's no question, it's gonna be an upgrade. I know, you know, like, we saw the plan, it includes landscaping, it includes, as you said, state-of-the-art new building, so, you know, and, and we run into these problems, and historically have run into these problems over the years, and you've been part of these discussions for a long, long time, where you have general business running through, there's like one layer of general business, and behind them are all residential neighborhoods. So we have these issues and problems all the time because of the way Revere was set up, and so anytime there's a new business or a business that's being proposed, you know, directly in the backyard, you're gonna find a home where people live, and it, there's no two ways around it, it's always concerning, and it's always, you know, I, I happen to know Mark and Kelly that are here tonight, I mean, if you went by their property, it's immaculate. They have maintained their property incredibly during the time they, that they've owned it. I mean, you could, I drive by it all the time, I use Derby Road all the time. And, you know, it's a shame that people that live on that street have to go out and basically self-maintain, because people don't know enough to put away their own rubbish, their own garbage. They, they, you know, they feel the need to throw it out in the street, and these are the things, you know, like, prior to you coming up, when we were talking about the HRC and the ideology and all this stuff, these are the issues that matter to people. They want clean neighborhoods, they wanna be safe. This is what people are interested in, and, you know, I think that we really have to put more focus and more attention on, how do we, you know, how do we step up enforcement? You know, for people just to throw things out their windows, and, and, you know, and feel the need to litter up neighborhoods that they don't live in. I mean, I'd like to see some sort, I'd like to see this council maybe start a conversation, not just because of this project, but for other projects that may come down the road, for other abutters, other neighbors, that are gonna be facing the same problem that these people who took time out of their lives to come up here tonight, because they care so much about their neighborhood, I think that we need to start a conversation about, how can we step up enforcement on this? It's not up to the residents that are paying high, high property taxes, that are paying high water rates, to have to go out and now keep our streets clean. That is not right, and it's not fair. And I'm not suggesting that Popeyes or any of the other businesses, you know, you know, are gonna be suddenly in the neighborhoods cleaning up and sweeping up after, after their patrons, but we need to do something to protect the neighborhoods. You know, it's a good project, it, it's gonna clean that site up, but what happens, you know, with them and Taco Bell and Dunkin' Donuts and all these other, that's who we have to be starting to have a conversation about, how we're gonna, you know, step up enforcement and protect the quality of life, or enhance the quality of life for our residents. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Hearing and seeing no more comments, we're gonna refer this to zoning on May 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the Mayor and Chief of Police be requested to look into creating Safe Trade Stations in Revere. Safe Trade Stations are utilized for safe exchanges on Internet purchases from private online sales such as Craigslist and Facebook Marketplace. There are currently 18 cities within the Commonwealth utilizing Safe Trade Stations. These stations are generally parking spaces on police department property and/or the police station lobby, all with 24/7 monitoring.
Counselor Cogliandro.
It speaks for itself, I'll just offer one more piece of information. If anyone's interested in reading about it, it's safetra站ions.com. I think it's a good idea, considering the amount of Internet sales. I think it's a good idea considering the amount of internet sales we have on Craigslist, things, you know, offer up, things like that, so that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Council President Fiscanti, that the mayor be requested to provide shredder truck services for residents twice per year to shred personal information documents. One event shall be held in Beauchamp, and the other event shall be held at Griswold Park.
Thank you. This was brought to my attention by a couple of residents, and I wanted to bring it in front of you. It was also, it has, this service has been provided by, I believe, the previous administration, where a service truck, shredding truck, was offered to the residents, and I would just like to bring it back if, if, if at all possible, and have it done twice a year at two different locations, you know, trying to service both ends of the city. That's all. Hold on. Any comments? Oh, let's...
Mr. President, I, I just want to say, excellent motion, and you are correct. This used to be done through the Consumer Affairs Office, and so maybe we can coordinate, or maybe send them, you know, a memorandum, because they can get together with the state agency, I'm trying, I'm trying to think of who it is that they deal with, it escapes me right now, but basically, they can set it up for free, the state will come in and do it for free, so it is a great service, and it's great you're bringing this motion up, and twice a year, I think, would be good, especially, you know, as the city has grown, I think just one day in one location probably doesn't make sense anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Maravito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also was going to mention what my colleague to the left said, that Revere Consumer Affairs Office used to have Consumer Shred Day. Also, AARP, later on in the years, they, they actually hosted free shredding events too.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, I definitely think we should go back and do twice a week, and I think we should also...
Twice a year.
Twice a year, I'm sorry, and we should all, not twice a week, but we should also try to make it in sync with spring cleaning, because that's when a portion of residents, or most people shred.
And I, I, you know, it was a good point, and I was going to mention that, the Consumer Affairs Office does now offer, on a lot, on a smaller scale, still offers residents the ability to shred some documents, okay? It is offered, but it's on a much smaller scale, so they offer it currently, right now, if people have, you know, some, some personal PI information, PI documents that they want shredded. You can go there, I wouldn't bring a bag load, obviously, because that's not, you know, that's not doable, but on a much smaller scale, I don't know the, the requirements, they do offer that, if people have some small information that they would like to shred. But that being said, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered, and this concludes...
Mr. President?
Yes?
If I might, a point of personal privilege?
Absolutely.
I apologize, I just, because I'm OCD, as I was driving to City Hall from work, I was listening to the meetings, and if we had a remote option, perhaps I could have called in and cast my roll calls, but I just, for the record, wanted to say that had I been present for agenda item number five, the National Grid Pole at 727 Revere Beach Parkway, I would have voted in support, I would have voted in support of the appointment subcommittee report, and I would have voted on all four of those roll calls about the, the transfer of free cash, the communication from the city auditor relative to free cash, item number 23. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that information. And this concludes the April 20... Okay. I'm sorry, spoke too soon.
Can we take him?
Councillor Maravito.
Recently, the Pellegrino family lost, had a loss, they suffered a loss of Frank Pellegrino, so I want to give a moment of silence to the Pellegrino and Terminello family.
All right. I'm gonna, we are adjourned, and this concludes the April 25th City Council meeting. Next meeting is May 9th. Thank you, and good evening.